Okay, it's 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment and join me in silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the planning commission meeting held on July 21, 2020. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
I move...
Okay, a motion by Senator... Wow, Commissioner, I'm really honored here. Commissioner Stanley, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
And that carries unanimously.
For the race.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, you got a senator, I gotta call Commissioner.
Okay, we will have a public comment period for each item on the agenda, but if anyone has any general comments not related to a specific item, now's the time to make them. So, if you have anything, please stand and come to the podium. And seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. Okay, our first item is a request to find the proposed small-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial max 0.6 FAR for the property owned by Faircloth Family LTD and located north of King Road, west of Clare Connor Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial for approximately 2.24 acres. The subject area is highlighted in yellow and located north of State Route 414 and west of Clare Connor Road. To the north is a vacant property and a place of worship. To the east are agriculture properties. To the south is the hydrorenz facility. To the west is a planned self-storage facility and a retention pond. The property is owned agriculture district, and an application for light industrial zoning has been submitted and will be presented at the next agenda item. The subject area is approximately 2.24 acres with industrially-zoned or industrially-oriented properties being in the vicinity. The development review committee recommends approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from agriculture to industrial, subject to the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, thanks. Any questions of staff? Thanks, Phil. Does the petitioner have a presentation? And seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I move that we find the proposed small future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial max 0.60 FAR for the property owned by Faircloth Family Limited and located north of King Road, west of Clare Connor Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is for the same property. It's a request to find the proposed change of zoning from AG, Agriculture District, to IL, Light Industrial District, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning for the property owned by Faircloth Family LTD and located north of King Road, west of Clare Connor Road. And we have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from Ag, Agriculture District, to IL, Light Industrial District, for the same subject property as the previous agenda item, and the proposed light industrial zoning is compatible with the previously proposed industrial future land use. The development review committee recommends approval of the rezoning from Agriculture District to Light Industrial District, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from Ag, Agriculture District, to IL, Light Industrial District, for the property owned by Faircloth Family LTD and located north of east King Road and west of Clare Connor Road. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I will be happy to address any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks. Any questions of staff? I don't know what happened here, but I've got a...
Wrong program.
He was talking to me, and I don't know how to stop it, so... May have to call on Rob.
Agriculture District, tract size 2.24 acres, maximum allowable development. I don't know how it started.
They're multi-megabytes, so if it's gonna read them all, we'll be here a long time.
Rob, you'll be right here. Throw that on the ground and stomp on it.
I don't know what button I leaned on, but I must have done something. Anyway, any questions of staff? Okay, thanks, Phil. And that's no presentation by the petitioner, so we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Okay. I move that we find the proposed change of zoning from Ag, Agriculture District, to IL, Light Industrial District, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning for the property owned by Faircloth Family Limited and located north of King Road, west of Clare Connor Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stanley, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the proposed rezoning and master plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and transition and neighborhood character zones, and recommend approval of the rezoning of the subject parcels from T, Transitional, to MU-KPI, that's Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange, assignment of the transition and neighborhood character zones, and approval of the master plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits, and subject to the applicant providing a traffic impact analysis, TIA, that is reviewed and accepted by the city prior to this item being scheduled for the first reading before the city council on September 16, 2020, for the property owned by Orlando Beltway Associates and located on the east side of Plymouth Sorento Road, approximately one mile north of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road. And I believe that's incorrect, it's on the west side of the road.
Quarter mile.
A quarter mile, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bobby Hall, Senior Planner. Property is 56.51 acres, and the applicant's requesting a rezoning from Transitional to Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use with a transition and neighborhood character zone to develop a subdivision consisting of 202 units, subject to the requirements of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. The vicinity map shows a location of the property, it's the black square that you see on the screen. The surrounding zoning of the property currently is purple, it's transitional. The properties that you see in the crosshatching are in unincorporated Orange County. The properties that you see in the orange are in the Kelly Park Form-Based Code area, and the properties that are the purple are in the city, they've been annexed but received a transitional zoning. Property is located a quarter mile north of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, and it's located on the west side of Plymouth Sorento Road, and it's within the one-mile radius of the State Route 429 Kelly Park Road interchange, as you can see on the map. If a property or any property is within that one-mile radius, the entire property is subject to the entire, the Form-Based Code standards noted in the Land Development Code. In accordance with the requirements of the Form-Based Code, the owner submitted a master plan which proposes development of property with a total of 202 units, of which 143 are single-family homes and 59 are townhomes, and reserves a 2.4-acre non-residential parcel located in the southeast corner of the site as reserved for future development. This is the non-residential property here, that's reserved for future development. The townhomes are contained primarily within the Transition District, which is about approximately the southern quarter of the property, and then the Neighborhood District is where the single-family residential units are reserved for construction at. And a minimum living area of 1,600 square feet is provided for the single-family units and 1,200 square feet is provided for the townhome units. Lot widths for the single-family units range between 40 and 50 feet. There are no minimum and maximum lot size and living area requirements in the Form-Based Code. Access to the site is proposed via Plymouth Sorento Road, which is detailed right here. It lines up with Domon Drive to the east. There will be an access point to the non-residential proposed off of Plymouth Sorento Road, and the non-residential property will integrate with the overall development site. There's interconnectivity between the property, the subject property and property to the north, which is the Bridle Path Development, and the properties to the south eventually will have interconnectivity in accordance with the guidance and the goals of the Form-Based Code. Dedication of a 30-foot wide strip of right-of-way for future needs for Plymouth Sorento Road is detailed on the master plan. Within the strip, 12-foot wide bicycle trail would be constructed by the developer to help facilitate the bicycle trail network that's envisioned in the Form-Based Code area. Roadway and pedestrian connections will be provided to allow cross-access to the properties to the north and south at the time they develop. In accordance with the requirements of the Form-Based Code, 20% of the area is reserved as open space. Common recreational elements include a community swimming pool, an internal trail system, passive open space recreation areas, and dedication of a bike trail along Plymouth Sorento Road. Architectural elevations have been provided, which are consistent with the architectural guidelines noted in the Form-Based Code. Conditions of approval contained within your staff report basically highlights the construction of the bike trail along Plymouth Sorento Road and possible need of a development agreement. The development review committee recommends approval, and staff recommends approval, subject to the applicant providing a traffic impact analysis that is reviewed and accepted by the city prior to this item being scheduled for first reading before the city council on September 16, 2020. If you have any questions, staff and applicant are here.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Does the petitioner have a presentation? And if so, if you would come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name's Jim Hall, I'm the principal at HTSI, I'm the applicant. We have a brief PowerPoint to kind of go a little bit farther than what Bobby did, and we have some neighbors that are interested in trying to figure out what we're talking about. So, if we could put the PowerPoint up?
Yeah. Wait a second. Hold on, yeah, didn't... The backup does not have it on here. I do not have it on here. I thought I had it on here.
Well, if we could just go back to your presentation, I think I could just run through it.
Okay. I apologize for that.
I don't think he had the plan for bridal and...
No, it's in their packet, though.
Okay, well, we can work off this one.
It is in their packet.
When they, when staff showed you the map of the orange-colored properties, there were four of them, Publix is down at the corner, which is waiting till there's enough houses out there. The other three properties, we've been working on for almost three years. And so, we got the hospital done on the west side, and we got Bridle Path done, which is a single-family community to the north that is designed in a neighborhood fashion, very similar to this one. They, we, where the clubhouse sits kind of near the back of the property, we saved a hill and a little creek and a bunch of trees, which has kind of been the, I'm here with Jimmy Hoffman from VHB, and I'm here with Dallas Austin from D.R. Horton, who's, who has the property under contract and is developing the Bridle Path. So, we have two vehicle connections. It's hard to see on that map.
There's a pointer.
There's a vehicle connection here, there's a vehicle connection here, and there's a pedestrian connection here. So, this path goes all the way up to about here, to the end of Bridle Path. Then we have a vehicle connection here, and we have, as you come from Bridle Path down, you can go all the way around this large open space. This is a large area of the preserved oak hammock, and the trail goes through there and then ties to the south. So, the next developer to the south can pick that up. And then we also have the trail along the front. So, we really tried to do some neighborhood design, integrate everything together, and make it nice. So, this area of single-family detached homes is very similar to what's to the north. We went ahead, and because we were in this different district, this district up here in the Kelly Park Vision Plan is called Neighborhood, so it's single-family. Transitions start, as we go south, as you go towards Kelly Park over that quarter of a mile, it gets more and more intense, the amount of development that actually the code requires. There's minimums, there's not max, there are maxims, but there's minimums you have to meet. So, we put in this 2.4-acre parcel that's being marketed as a daycare site, and then our townhomes are here, because as you go to the south, it's gonna become denser and denser as you get down to Kelly Park Road. So, we've worked closely with staff, we have followed the 2010 Vision Plan, which then, I guess it was in 2017, the Form-Based Code was finally finalized, like in July of 2017, so here we are, three years later. And so, we've followed all those things. We were maybe one of the first, if not the first, transition project to come through, so there was a lot of bumps and things, figuring things out. You don't want to make medical history, but making planning history's not good either. So, with that, we would respectfully request that you approve this project. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, any questions of the petitioner?
Yes, I do. So, this is subject to a traffic analysis, is that correct?
Yeah, and I forgot to mention that. We will do the traffic analysis. We didn't realize we had to do one, and so what we would request is, as a part of your motion, if we could have the traffic analysis done before the second reading, I don't think it'll be done for the first reading, and since we've been in this for three years, if we could be done before the second reading, so that when it comes in for the true approval, staff will have time...
They can't make that approval. That this is, this is a staff and a code requirement.
Never mind. You could still make the motion if you wanted to. It's just a whole timing thing. We've been in this so long that...
What's your, what's your vision or anticipation of how Plymouth Sorento Road would be modified to accommodate Bridle Path in this project, going towards Kelly Park?
Well, eventually, Plymouth Sorento has to be at least four lanes. I mean, you're proposing like 8,000 or 9,000 units in the Vision Plan and 12 million square feet of stuff, so our little 200 houses is a blip on the radar compared to what is ultimately gonna happen on Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento. But, you know, you have the 429, which will whisk you to either Sanford for some jobs or whisk you downtown for some jobs, or it'll bring you back here to Apopka for some jobs. And so, that's the, the whole beauty of this thing. If you go back all the way to 1988, when I guess it was Governor Bush started with the Econ Task Force, what are we gonna do for the Econ River? The expressway authority wanted to take the road around Orlando and have the Beltway around, and there was all this then, this dichotomy of development versus river protection. So, but the expressway authority says, well, we can't build this road unless we get some quarters. Back then, they didn't even have the E-Pass, you had the three quarters. And so, this balance was worked out, that the Kelly Park Interchange is the one spot on the entire length from 441 to I-4 that has a local connection. So, they, the state set up that Apopka and the county, and I think it was almost all the city did this, that they had to do the one-mile radius around the, wherever the interchange was chosen. At that point, it wasn't even chosen. The real legislation happened in 2004, that a one-mile study area had to be done, and it had to be done in a way that was smart growth, but was fairly dense, so you could have a pocket of development that didn't sprawl out and affect the river, and you got rid of all the septic tanks, and you had water and sewer, so that it was environmentally smart growth, but it didn't allow things just to sprawl off a new expressway. So, with all that being done, there was a meeting of the minds between protect the river and the expressway authority, looking for the overall good of the Orlando metropolitan region. And so, that led to the Kelly Park Vision Plan, which led to the plan of 2010, which led to the Form-Based Code of 17, which we're trying to follow, and I think staff would agree, we are following on point.
Do you have an interest in the property south of this project to Kelly Park?
No. These are the last three that I've been working on. Again, I'm a planning consultant, I don't have any money in the deal, so...
Okay.
We have Representative Horton here that's already doing Bridle Path, that followed all the rules, and I think this will be a really nice neighborhood. I mean, we strive very hard to design neighborhoods, not just projects, subdivisions, so that grand open space and the, and the large oak hammock that we saved and trails that'll go over half a mile just to get the projects, these projects on this side of the Beltway started, I think it's a really, really strong start, that you can just follow this lead with the rest of the projects on the east side of the Beltway to create this Kelly Park area that will be a real, it'll be an economic boon to the city, and I think it'll be some great neighborhoods.
They're very complementary projects for each other, you know, plus being just north of the Publix Program, Publix Project, which should be starting groundbreaking in about a month or so. So, it's, they get their, their first customers.
Publix is on the south side, though.
South side of Kelly Park, yeah, but this is just, just a hair north, so it's...
It's really important when you do your first projects in a new area, that you really set the bar very, very high. So, you've already got a Publix Center, you've got two really nice residential neighborhoods, and then you have the hospital. So, it's a fantastic start for Kelly Park.
Did you say there's a, there's an interconnecting road between Bridle Path and this project?
There's two.
Yeah, if you look on your packet, if you have your laptop on page 40, you can see the map and the connectivity, you just need to look at the staff report, it does have it.
There's one right here in the corner, there's another one here, kind of in the middle, and then the pedestrian path comes up here, and it goes around a common open space, and then goes up that hill to the creek and the preserved trees there, and then our path comes down and goes around, all the way around this, and then here are the preserved trees here. And then we thought it was important, I ride my bicycle every weekend, so I like trails. So, we thought the idea that you would have a trail along Plymouth Sorento, so as each project comes in, eventually you're gonna have something that could tie into the county trail system, you could start to have your own trail system, which, you know, you don't have to ride a bicycle, you can be out there walking with the stroller and the little kids or walking your dog, you could be running, whichever you prefer. I would bet that these paths and just these two projects are probably at least a two-mile circuit, so, you know, you could have a nice time.
Yeah, I think that's good, because you have Bridle Path and you have this project, and, you know, you can help keep traffic off of Plymouth Sorento Road, unnecessary traffic. People are just moving inside the projects, one to the other.
Yeah, so, and then, so we have, you know, this is the first little bit of non-residential. As you go south, you're gonna have more and more of it, so as these connections keep happening, then you don't have to go out onto Plymouth Sorento. And again, you have to design it in a way that it's not a straight shot through the neighborhood where people start going too fast, but you have to make it not convenient, but not perfectly convenient, so that people will then choose just to mosey on down, to go to whatever commercial is on the north side of Kelly Park, and they never have to touch a big road.
Exactly. I live in a subdivision that has Phase 1 and Phase 2, and it was built that way, so a lot of Phase 1 and Phase 2 people move in between the subdivisions, and it's good, keep traffic off of Plymouth Sorento Road.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was, that was part of the, the Vision Plan from the start, and we've tried to implement that to the best that we could.
Good idea.
Okay, further questions of staff? Or the petitioner? I have just a question for Jim. It seems to me, in terms of this first reading, it's either a matter of having the traffic study done or postponing that first hearing, is it not?
Correct, yeah. We typically require the traffic study for this meeting, and we did convey that this would need to be done, the traffic study would need to be done before it got scheduled for city council, because city council asks those questions.
Traffic study's part of the motion.
It is, but he had suggested it be changed, but I think it really, probably not appropriate to change.
We cannot bring it to city council without the traffic study.
Right, exactly.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, in our meeting next month on the 15th, the day before the scheduled first reading of this?
The city, the planning commission, yes.
Okay. And is there any reason why we couldn't have the traffic plan in front of us when we made a motion on this and do that on the 15th, the day before?
It's...
Well, I don't, I mean, it says here, and this is what confuses me, and we had this, we went through this on one prior, I think, month before last, says, "Traffic impact study that is reviewed and accepted by the city prior to the item being scheduled for the first reading." Well, reviewed and accepted by the city would be our role, correct?
Actually, the, the traffic study itself is, is reviewed by our, our traffic coordinator, Pam Richmond, and our, our contractors. They've got the professional knowledge for that.
Okay. But if it's not part of our decision-making process, why is it included in our motion?
Just as, as backup information, so you know that we're still requiring this before it goes to city council, because we've, we've talked about the traffic studies before.
No, I understand. It just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I get it, if it's semantics, then that's fine.
Well, right now, 202 homes on Plymouth Sorento, there'll be ample capacity, but, you know, you can do these things piecemeal for every project that comes in, but at some point, there probably needs to be a larger study that says, at what building permit number do we need to get serious or look for some state funding or go to the Metro Plan about getting some money for Plymouth Sorento, and then ultimately getting some money for Kelly Park? That's a much bigger question than a little 202 unit...
No, I understand that, but mine is just questioning that we're, we're doing this again, where we're making a decision based on something that's gonna come later. Well, if it's going to be done before the 15th, and we have an opportunity to do that before the meeting, we have that.
It, this, the, the project itself, though, the traffic study, if it, if it, that's, that's the decision factor that the city council has in regards to traffic study. Your decision is whether or not this meets the, the intent of the code and the KPI district for the neighborhood and for the transitional districts. That's all.
I understand that, but if it's part of the project, then, I just, like I said, the semantics of it being included in our decision-making process, you know, relevant to that, we have to make this decision... No, I understand. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I get it. If it's semantics, then that's fine.
Well, right now, 202 homes on Plymouth Sorento, there'll be ample capacity. But, you know, you can do these things piecemeal for every project that comes in, but at some point, there probably needs to be a larger study that says, at what building permit number do we need to get serious, or look for some state funding, or go to the Metro Plan about getting some money for Plymouth Sorento, and then ultimately getting some money for Kelly Park? That's a much bigger question than a little 202 unit.
No, I understand that. Mine is just questioning that we're doing this again, where we're making a decision based on something that's going to come later. Well, if it's going to be done before the 15th, then we have an opportunity to do that before the meeting. We have that.
This, the project itself, though, the traffic study, if it, that's the decision factor that the City Council has-
Right.
-in regards to traffic study. Your decision is whether or not this meets the intent of the code and the KPI district for the neighborhood and transitional districts. That's all.
I understand that. But if it's part of the project, then I just, like I said, the semantics of it being included in our decision-making process, you know, relevant to that, we have to make this decision pending this, that's not done yet, and we had that before, and it's just, I'm not comfortable with that. If it's something that you guys are going to look at and make a decision on, then it shouldn't be involved in our process. We make a decision on what you had just described, and then the traffic, now that you do that and turn it to City Council.
We're letting you know what we're requiring.
Okay, that's fine. I understand, I understand.
Okay, very good. So no further questions of the petitioner, then we'll close the petition, the presentations, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find a proposed rezoning and master plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and Transition and Neighborhood Character Zones, and recommend approval of the rezoning of the subject parcels from T (Transitional) to MU-KPI (Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange), assignment of the Transition and Neighborhood Character Zones, and approval of the master plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits, and subject to the applicant providing a traffic impact analysis, TIA, that is reviewed and accepted by the city prior to this item being scheduled for first reading before the City Council on September 16, 2020, for the property owned by Orlando Beltway Associates and located on the west, should I say, west side?
West side, yes.
Okay, we just changed our document here. West side of Plymouth Sorento Road, approximately a quarter mile, is that correct, quarter mile?
Yes.
Okay, north of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lurendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is a request to find the residences at Emerson Park Major Development Plan, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommend approval of the major development plan, subject to the findings of the staff report, for the property owned by Residences at Emerson Park LLC, care of Charles Whittle, and located at 1601 Alston Bay Boulevard. We have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Planning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the residences at Emerson Park Major Development Plan. Property is located east of Ocoee-Opaquah Road, south of Emerson Park Town Homes, and west of Emerson Park Residential Subdivision. It is approximately 14 acres. Aerial of the property shows it's currently vacant and surrounded on the northeast by residential uses. The residences at Emerson Park Major Development Plan proposes a development of 103 townhome units with private roadways. The applicant reserves a total of 3.07 acres as open space for recreation. Amanities include a pool, cabana, and a dog park. The minimum typical lot width is 20 feet and a lot depth of 110 feet. Typical living area is 1,000 square feet, as required by the Mixed Use East Shore Gateways zoning subdistrict. Ingress and egress access points for the development will be via Alston Bay Boulevard. A 20-foot-wide emergency access is provided along northwest boundary of the project site leading to Street C and Seaborn Road. Landscape plan shows a mixture of Southern Magnolia and Live Oak proposed on the northern boundary and embellish the northern side of the central roadway and landscape islands. An array of dwarf hollies and Southern Magnolias and Live Oaks decorate the many areas on the southern boundary. DRC recommends approval of the major development plan, and the recommended motion tonight is to recommend approval of the major development plan, subject to the findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself from this, because I'm the president of our HOA at Emerson Park, and we've been having quite a bit of dialogue with the folks from Park Square. It's been very good, but I'll be recusing.
Okay, very good. Okay, other questions of staff? Okay, thanks. Does the petitioner have a presentation?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Stanley, I want to be filling out a form.
I will.
I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Does the petitioner have a presentation, and if so, if you would give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. My name is Jimmy Hoffman with VHB. We're the design consultants for this project. Our offices are at 225 East Robinson Street, Orlando, Florida, 32801. We are here together with Katie Peck from Park Square Homes. We agree with staff's recommendation. We're here in support of the project, and we're happy to answer any questions of you.
Okay, very good, thanks. Any questions of the petitioner? Thanks. Okay, we'll close the presentations, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to recommend approval and find the residence at Emerson Park Major Development Plan, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and recommend approval of the major development plan, subject to the findings of the staff report, for the property owned by residents at Emerson Park LLC, care of Charles Whittle, and located at 1601 Alston Bay Boulevard.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the South Muse at Avian Point Preliminary Development Plan, consistent with the Avian Point PD Master Plan and the Land Development Code, and to recommend approval of the South Muse at Avian Point Preliminary Development Plan, for the property owned by Opaquah Clear Lake Investments LLC, and located at parcel B-3, Avian Point PD, south of Peterson Road, east of State Route 429. That was staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bobby Howell, once again. The preliminary development plan proposes the construction of 102 townhome units on 13.9 acres within the Avian Point PD. Vicinity map shows the location on the screen. Aerial map shows the character of the surrounding areas, primarily residential area. And the master plan, this is the approved master plan, which shows the location of the parcel within the Avian Point PD. The Avian Point PD allows the development of 758 residential units consisting of single-family townhomes and apartment units. Consistent with the approved master plan, two-story townhomes and six-and-eight-unit buildings with a minimum living area of 1,350 square feet are proposed, and one-car garages are provided. Two ingress and egress access points for the development are located along Grand Avian Parkway that will lead into the development. Their internal roadway network is comprised of private rights-of-way that consist of 32-foot and 38-foot wide alleys, and 45-foot and 54-foot wide streets. Pavement widths of 18 and 24 feet are detailed for the streets and alleys. All proposed alleys and streets are located in tracks that are owned and maintained by the homeowners' association. On-street parking is proposed on the internal streets. All townhome units are proposed as rear-loaded with garages located in the rear of the units. Townhome units are located on lots, that are located on lots 1 through 16, will have frontage on Grand Avian Parkway. The remaining units will have a frontage on a muse, which is an internal common area that is owned and maintained by a homeowners' association. All elements of preliminary development plan are consistent with the approved PD master plan, as well as the landscaping. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and staff recommends approval. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, very good, thanks. Any questions of staff?
I have one. So this is basically the same as the rest of Emerson Park?
This may.
It's where it's all rear-load?
Yes.
And I couldn't tell by the drawing, and my eyes are only so good. In the front of the units in Emerson Park, there are one or two spaces in front of each, you know, it's like an incut for the curb, so you can have parking, you know, from the street side?
Yeah. This is not in Emerson Park. This is Avian Point, which is-
Oh, this is Avian Point.
Yeah, yeah. But it's consistent, you've seen parcels B-1 and I believe B-2, which were both townhome parcels. This is consistent with those. And this is the master plan, which shows the location of those. So this is B-3. So it's consistent exactly with the master.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, other questions?
So Peterson Road connects from King, goes around and down, does it connect to Lust?
Yeah, so this is Grand Avian, right here. So this is Peterson, loops around like that, and it goes down and it connects down with Lust Road.
Right. Okay. Because I asked that question the last time we talked about the project up on Peterson, and I really didn't get a good answer.
About Peterson Road.
It was like the road went nowhere. But now I know it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? Okay, thanks, Bobby. All right, well, does the petitioner have a presentation? And seeing none, we'll close the presentation, open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I move that we find the South Muse at Avian Point Preliminary Development Plan, consistent with the Avian Point PD Master Plan and the Land Development Code, and to recommend approval of the South Muse at Avian Point Preliminary Development Plan for the property owned by Opaquah Clear Lake Investments LLC, and located at parcel B-3, Avian Point PD, south of Peterson Road, east of SR 429.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lurendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stanley. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a quasi-judicial item for the commission's consideration. It's a request to approve a variance of the Code of Ordinances, Part III, Land Development Code, Article III, Section 3.5.3.3(c), maximum building height standards, to allow a maximum allowable height of 40 feet in the IL Light Industrial Zoning District, in lieu of the required 35-foot maximum, for the construction of two proposed warehouse/distribution buildings on the property owned by ML Carter Services, Inc., trustee of Carter Keen Land Road Land Trust, and located at 2550 Ocoee-Opaquah Road. And since this is a quasi-judicial item, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that desires to be recognized as an affected party. And seeing none, I would ask the commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
I have not.
And hearing none, let's proceed with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bobby Howell, once again. The applicant is requesting a variance from the Land Development Code, Article III, Section 3.5.3(c), maximum building height, to allow a maximum allowable height of 40 feet in the IL zoning district, in lieu of the required 35-foot maximum, to allow for the construction of two proposed warehouse buildings, warehouse distribution buildings located at 2550 Ocoee-Opaquah Road. Vicinity map shows the location of the subject property. It's near the interchange of 429 and Ocoee-Opaquah Road. Aerial map shows the character of the surrounding area. On the north side of 429, where the property is located, it's primarily undeveloped. The applicant is requesting the variance to allow 40-foot building height to meet industry standards for a warehouse distribution building, and will allow for the development of Class A facility on the property. 2018, the City Council approved an increase to allow a maximum building height of 55 feet for the Mid-Florida Logistics Park, based on the applicant's assertion that modern warehouses require 36 to 45 feet, or 45 feet of clear space under roof to accommodate automated materials, handling equipment, and maximizing storage. Surrounding properties, which are undeveloped, have zoning designations of office, which allows a maximum building height of 35 feet, and mixed-use east shore gateway, which allows a maximum building height of 45 feet for apartment and commercial uses. Just kind of a little bit of a background, this property here is zone Mixed Use East Shore Gateway. It's what's called Oak Point North. The staff has received a development proposal, which will be coming to this board within probably several months, for an apartment complex. The top of the roof probably hits about 40 feet on that. So this variance, if granted, would be in character with the surrounding area. This request was reviewed by the Development Review Committee, which consisted of the police and the fire departments, both of whom found no safety hazards and other detriments to the public if this variance was granted. The request is just outside the 10% maximum adjustment ratio that's granted to the Community Development Director in the Land Development Code. This is 12.5% more than what the maximum building height is in the zoning code. Per the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission shall make an initial determination based on three criteria. This is the elevation of the proposed building, which depicts the building height request, and it is in character with the buildings that you see, such as in Mid-Florida Logistics Park. Three criteria are noted on the screen, so when you consider the variance, first of all, you have to consider the three criteria. Once an initial determination has been reached, a variance shall only be approved on a finding that the applicant demonstrates that there is competent substantial evidence on the nine variance criteria noted on the screen in front of you. Planning Commission's decision shall be one of the following: approval of the variance, approval of the variance subject to modification and/or condition, or denial of the variance. Staff and applicant are here for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, does the petitioner have a presentation? And seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. And on this, it's a two-step process. The first motion would be to find that sufficient information indicates that a need for the proposal, proposed variance arises out of the physical surroundings, shape, topographical conditions, or other physical or environmental conditions that are unique to the specific property involved. Do I have a motion to that effect?
One motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gussler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Now, unless a member of the commission wants to divide any of those nine criteria, we can vote those at once. And in that case, we would need a motion to find that sufficient information occurs to accept each of the nine variance criteria.
Mr. Chair, you do not have to vote on each individual criteria once. If you make a finding that there's competent substantial evidence to support all nine, you can make one motion to that effect.
That's, I thought, what I just said, that the find that's-
What he was trying to say is we don't have to, unless somebody wants to pick one of those out and discuss it.
Correct. It just sounded from this end, it sounded like you were asking for a vote on each one.
No, no. No, no, sorry. Sorry, I misspoke. If there is no need for that, then I would need a motion to find that sufficient information occurs to accept each of the nine variance criteria. So I would ask, does anyone make that motion?
I do.
Commissioner Gussler makes that motion. Is there a second?
I do.
A second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second on the nine criteria. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? There being no further business to come before the commission will be adjourned.